Morning. May I call to order meeting of the Special Finance Committee. This morning, we have two sessions and will end at one fifteen P M. May I remind members that all questions must be directly related to the draft estimates, although this haven't hasn't been the case so far. And if you like to follow up on written reply, please quote the reply number. If we don't have enough time, you can ask supplementary questions in writing. And this session is on education. I'd like to welcome the Secretary for Education and this Chief Secretary.
Chairman, education is the key to nurturing talent. The government attaches importance to investment in education and is willing to increase resources in education as a long-term investment. The total expenditure on education in twenty eighteen ninety was significantly increased by twenty eight point four percent to one hundred and thirteen point seven billion dollars, accounting for twenty point four percent of the total government expenditure. Of this, the recurrent education expenditure were increased by five point six percent to eighty four point six billion dollars, accounting for twenty point eight percent of the total government recurrent expenditure. Both the recurrence and total education expenditures will respectively take up the largest share in the government expenditure among all policy areas. The recurring expenditure on education has over the ten years from twenty oh nine ten to twenty eighteen nineteen increased by sixty seven percent with an average growth rate of five point eight percent per annum. This demonstrates the government's long-term commitment to invest in education. In twenty eighteen nineteen, we would take forward the new measures announced in the last year's policy address and this year's budget, which include on KG education, starting from twenty eighteen nineteen school year, adjusting the salary-related subsidies for teaching staff under the new government's new kindergarten scheme according to the annual service pay adjustment, and extending the title of a grant for three more years up to twenty twenty one twenty two school year, so that kindergartens may retain their long-serving teachers. Primary, secondary, and special education will set up a two point five billion student activities support fund to support students with financial needs to participate in life-wide learning activities. Will reserve two billion dollars to expedite installation of lifts for public sector schools without such facilities. Will provide recurrent air conditioning grants for public sector schools to cover the daily expenses of air conditioning systems installed and reserving resources for installation of air con systems in schools based on their needs. To regularize the pilot scheme on promoting interflows between sister schools in Hong Kong and the mainland from twenty eighteen nineteen school year with a grant of hundred fifty thousand per annum for each school. To implement a policy of one school social worker for each school in public sector primary schools, and to enhance the provision of school social workers for special schools with a view to strengthening the social work and counseling services. Also enhance the nursing support in special schools. For post-secondary and vocational professional education, we set up a twelve billion hostel development fund for easing the shortfall in hostels of U G C funded universities. We inject three billion dollars into the research endowment fund and deploy seventy million dollars to provide studentship for local students submitted to U G C funded research postgraduate programs as early as practicable in the twenty eighteen nineteen academic year. And we'll continue to implement the seventh round of matching grant scheme. We will also plan to launch the eighth round of matching grant scheme of two point five billion dollars for eligible publicly funded post-secondary institutions to apply. We'll regularize the study subsidy scheme for designated professions or sectors from the twenty eighteen nineteen academic year and to increase the number of subsidized places from about a thousand per cohort to three thousand per cohort. We'll inject eight hundred million dollars into the Hong Kong and South Government Scholarship Fund. We'll reserve resources to regularize the pilot scheme, training and support scheme. We will invite the Quality Education Funds Steering Committee to consider allocating three billion dollars for application by kindergarteners and schools through simplified procedures in order to implement measures relating to school-based curriculum development and student support measures, as well as the relevant school improvement works and procurement of supplies with a view to enhancing learning from different perspectives. We're going to make injection of eight hundred million dollars into the Gifted Education Fund for deploying diversified strategies to enhance support to gifted education. We'll provide a one-off support grant of two thousand dollars to each of the students who are eligible for receiving means to student financial assistance in the twenty eighteen nineteen school year and to pay the exemption fees for school candidates studying for the twenty nineteen Hong Kong D S E as a one-off measure. Besides, the F S has reserved two billions of dollars for recurrent education expenditure. Together with the one point four billion earmarked by the current term government appointee in office, there will be a total of three point four billion dollars recurring funding reserved for continued implementation of quality education. We'll discuss with the education sector and take into account the suggestions of the four task force setup to review various policy aspects of education, and considering the way forward with improvement of education policy and the best use of additional resources, including enhancing the professional development for teachers, et cetera. Regarding the non-current funding of eighteen point seven billion dollars reserved by the F S, three billion dollars is used for injection into the research endowment fund. We also utilize five hundred million dollars to implement the work plan of the committee on professional development of teachers and principals. We'll continue to explore the optimal use of the remaining fifteen point two billion dollars reserved funding to provide support the education and research development in the high education sector. Chairman, myself and my colleagues will be happy to answer questions from members.
Doctor Kwok Kai-ki, oh five one two five six, primary and secondary education. Recently, there is a very interesting media coverage on Chinese, I mean, on the history subject in the, in the primary and secondary sector. The curriculum will have to be approved by a special committee, and many accurate descriptions of historic events in textbooks were found to be okay in the past, but not so this year. For instance, Hong Kong is in the, to the southern part of China, problematic. The recovery of Hong Kong by China, problematic. The transfer of sovereignty back to the mainland, problematic. China insisted on resuming sovereignty of Hong Kong, problematic. Most people migrated to Hong Kong after nineteen forty nine, problematic. One-party dictatorship in China, problematic. One year ago, all these were in textbooks and allowed, and one year down the road, they are all disallowed. What has happened in a year's time? One year ago, Eddie Ng and Mr. Kevin Young were in the Education Bureau and the C E was Siwan Leung, and one year down the road, we don't have Mr. Eddie Ng, we have Dr. Choi Yoc Lien as the Under-Secretary and also Carrie Lam as Siwan Lam. And our presidency has also amended his constitution and started a new office. People asked the Education Bureau, why were these contents changed? And it was told that all vetting is to be kept confidential. I think you're trying to change the curriculum, to change people's mindset, to brainwash, and to change history. I can't see how what's in the textbooks is now considered incorrect one year down the road. And when publishers asked for the reasons, the answer was no comment, and you have to guess. Now, if membership of the panel is kept confidential, and they do the vetting in camera, and you have to guess what's wrong with your textbooks. Perhaps the history of Chinese Communist Party or approved textbooks in the mainland should be passed on to our publishers in Hong Kong, that may be better, so that they don't have to guess what the boss wants in order to be politically correct. If the publishers have got the names of the authors published, and then the panelists don't have to tell us who they are, is it a secret society? People can be the big brother behind the scene and vet textbooks used in Hong Kong? How come Hong Kong has sunk to this level? What has happened in the past year? How come we've seen such big changes? Your question is not related. No, it's related to questions number fifty one to fifty six on primary and secondary education. But your question is not relevant to the draft estimates. Allow them to answer, but you have to tell us how it is relevant. Of course, it is. Draft estimates will have to give money to the panelists. I'd like to know whether these panelists are paid.
Well, we have outsiders from the Education Bureau taking part in the vetting process and are not paid. We have to observe the confidentiality rule, so that they won't know who are the publishers of these textbooks for vetting. And by the same token, publishers do not know who the panelists are to avoid conflict of interest and transfer of benefits. So the principle of confidentiality is such that pending completion of the vetting, no one will know who the publishers are to avoid unfairness during the process. And in the process, I don't have much time left, Chair. Answer my question directly, Secretary. My answer, my question is very simple. What has happened in this year? How come what was right in the past is wrong now? It has always been so in the textbooks. What has happened in the past year? Why is the vetting criteria changed?
Well, if you want me to reply, I've got only thirteen seconds. Well, you can continue to reply. You have to understand that we do not vet the content out of context. We have to put a certain sentence in context. In the past, a certain sentence might be acceptable in the context, but in a new textbook, it is not.
As for example, well, not so much about a vetting of textbooks. Hong Kong is at the southern part of China. In terms of the language, there may be different interpretations. It's not, it's not clear. It may be within the southern part of China or at the southern part of China, but outside China, so that might be uncertainties. And also, Hong Kong taking back, I mean, China taking back the sovereignty of Hong Kong in our history. Well, all along, Hong Kong, I mean, China has sovereignty over Hong Kong all along, but this is really out of context. Well, we have to look at the passage as a whole in the vetting process. As for Doctor Kwak saying that we will be using Chinese history textbooks within the mainland to be used in Hong Kong. I will take that into consideration if that is the suggestion of Doctor Kwak. But we can certainly take reference from China's Chinese history textbook for reference. The Secretary for Education is talking about the Chinese history textbooks. You, you sounded, you are very loyal to the country. You said that it's not right to say that Hong Kong is in the southern part of China. You, you said that we should say categorically whether Hong Kong is within or outside the territory of China. Now, the T V station said that in nineteen forty nine, when China established the country, then a large number of Chinese people emigrated to Hong Kong. But the T V station asked me, I said that they came to Hong Kong as refugees. So you have to be accountable to history. And the chairman said that it's not very relevant to the budget estimates. I would like to ask a question about reply one five four one eight eight, and that is the learning of Chinese language of ethnic minority students in Hong Kong. But we use Putonghua to teach Chinese, and the E M students learn Putonghua, and they know little about Cantonese. But then for many other subjects, they are taught in Cantonese. So they, it's impossible for them to learn efficiently. I know that you've been dishing out or allocating two hundred to three hundred million dollars to E M students to learn Cantonese, but having the money doesn't mean that they will make progress. So why don't you give us the figures? You said that you don't have the tracking figures because you fear there will be a stigmatization effect. I think you just don't want to know. This is very much a ostrich's policy, and you can't help non-Chinese-speaking students in Hong Kong. Secretary?
We want to help N C S students learn Chinese, and it's an established policy. And we have the learning framework for learning Chinese as a second language. Now, when schools use Putonghua to teach Chinese, will that bring difficulties to E M students in their learning? And that's, for, for that approach, is really up to the schools to make their own professional judgment as to whether to adopt it. And the schools will have in mind the capability of the students. If there are many N C S students in their schools, and as a result, they may not learn very efficiently under that approach, then the schools may not make that option.
Oh, do you have, do you monitor them? If I think, if you think that the schools are not doing well in that, would you advise the principals not to adopt that approach?
Well, it's not the case that if the, the school has many N C S students, then they should not use Putonghua to teach. No, that's not necessarily so. When our colleagues make inspections on the schools and find that if Putonghua is used in teaching Chinese and many N C S students are having living, learning difficulties, then we would definitely raise the issue, and we will talk with the schools on how to improve learning and teaching. And these, you've allocated a large amount of money to the schools, but then that doesn't mean that you are effective. You don't have specific measures to help them. While money may not be able to resolve our problems, that's true. When we support teachers in teaching N C S students apart from allocating the extra resources, we provide professional support, we provide learning packages, we will also, well, if needed, we will go to the schools and prepare the curriculum for them, together with them. I still want to chase you after the figures. You don't want to give us the figures. Over seventy-five percent of N C S students fail in D S E exams, and the scholar has conducted certain studies on the use of Mandarin in teaching Chinese in schools. I think you can track the trends and collect the figures, so that we will be given the figures, say, next year. Well, we will collect statistics based on our needs. We will continue to, to do that. But you, we failed to pay heed to Unison's recommendations. Chairman, whenever we make a decision, we will be all ears to the sector's views. Ms. Tanya Chen. Mr. Horace Zhang is back. Well, just now, there was no pro-establishment camp members here at all. I would like to ask about. Mr. Tommy Zhang's questions, reply number thirty nine, is about international schools. In twenty oh nine, the government has set a limit on the number of local students in international schools. And so there is a standard on local and non-local students, and for new international schools in the agreement signed with them, for example, for Harrods, there is a certain requirement. In Annex One, there are two schools which tick in over seventy percent of long local students. The first school is forty, seventy, four point three percent, and for the others, there are over fifty percent. Kyang Su and Chechang's Primary School, et cetera. And in twenty sixteen, the government said that it will continue to monitor the situation, and if international schools breach the service agreements, including the ratio of local students, the E D B will follow up. So my question is, have you followed up in the past few years on cases like those? And after your follow-up, has there been any improvement? What is the, the year? What are the schools involved? And also, in coming up with the percentage of non-local students, how did you arrive at the percentage? So is there a requirement that local students should not exceed thirty percent of all students? In, starting in two oh nine, we have the seventy to thirty percent ratio. And for some of the schools, actually, before that, there was no such requirement. But then for newly approved international schools, especially for schools which have been granted land and vacant premises by the government, there is such requirement. And after twenty fourteen, we also set out categorically that if the ratio of non-local students will exceed seventy percent, we will add an extra score for them in assessing their applications. There are only two schools which breached the early undertaking earlier, and they are relatively new schools, and in the first few years, they may not be able to reach that, that standard. We have followed up duly and told them they must reach our required standards. And for individual schools, our situation may be, I will have to defer to my colleagues to take that. Do you want to find out more? Well, I would like to have a paper setting out the situation before two oh nine and after two oh nine. And after the standard was set in two oh nine, were there any schools which are breaching the standards? Well, set that out in a table so that we can ascertain the seriousness of the problem. If member would like to have further breakdowns, then we will try our best to meet with your demands. I believe that you can. We have five minutes? Well, then I'll continue with my question then. I would like to ask this on behalf of Mr. Dennis Kwak, because he is now in the Bay Area, and he asked me to ask these questions. Is one one six? Originally, he was asking the administration to list the recurrent and non recurrent subsidy for primary public sector and private sector schools in the past six years, but then the government has given us figures on two items, and there is this non recurrent expenditure on liberal studies subsidy, and that subsidy stopped in twenty thirteen. How come that, that was stopped? I mean, is the accurate information being provided here? Well, please give a brief reply. Can I ask Mrs. Hong to take that question? For the liberal studies subsidy, and that has stopped on a certain date. And maybe we can give you a supplementary written reply on exactly which, in which year the subsidy stopped. Okay, it's now my turn. Secretary? You would, we'll be reviewing the implementation of the various grants and subsidies in an appropriate time to achieve the most desirable effect. And in twenty sixteen seventeen, the Artic Commission has reviewed the Language Fund's effectiveness and the public's perception that in relation to scholar and language fund, additional funding has been required all the time. And what results has it achieved? We don't know, but I can't say that when I participated in the scholar, I did very well. Then there was this report prepared by scholar, perhaps in twenty oh three and twenty oh four, and that is a proposal to enhance language standard in Hong Kong. And there is one thing which has remained unchanged up to now. Now, what are the qualifications required of the primary and secondary language teachers? In the past, anyone who used it to, who used it to having the language skills, and they can teach, they could teach the language. And then we have three sets of requirements, and they should have the basic competencies, and they know the parragages, et cetera. Now, this is the only thing that I think that, the only proposal which is meaningful coming out from the Language Fund. And the Education Commission seemed to be doing great work twenty years ago, but then up to today, the scholar doesn't seem to be proposing anything concrete nowadays. And as far as language is concerned, what is most pressing is to stimulate kindergarten students or pupils' interest in learning language. Say for B C A T S A in P one, P three, and S three, there are not about this. Well, a student may reach the standard, but it doesn't mean that he's interested. But then if a student has the interest, then he will continue learning. So for example, for myself, I learned engineering, but then I forgot all about it now. So interest is a very important thing.
I've been saying that for K G and primary schools, for the format least, we should give them a net teacher per school as far as possible. Many people argue whether we must have a native teacher to teach English, whether a local teacher will do the job. Now, I'm fifty fifty on this, but I think to enhance the interest of students, we need a native teacher to make storytelling more interesting, for instance. So I don't know about the Education Commission. In fact, it should do something, but can you ask scholar to present to you a report in one year's time to enhance a student's interest in languages in kindergarten and primary schools? Well, you want to give them money to promote reading, but you have to ensure that they are interested at first, because no matter how many books they read a day, that doesn't mean that they are interested in the language itself. Chairman, you're very correct. While enhancing the language proficiency of students, we have to enhance their student. Earlier this week, they see a pause please, Secretary. Now, whether, whether, I'm not talking about the proficiency or the interest. Well, I will argue what is the cause and what is the result. But earlier this week, the C E said that we attach a lot of significance to reading, and we're going to launch measures to encourage that. Of course, we focus on new resources given to primary and secondary schools, but one of our foresight is to enhance K G students' interest in reading. We're going to discuss with the K G sector how to do it. Scholar has contributed a lot to promoting the development of our language proficiency in schools. Can you ask them to prepare a report for you? When we have time, I can ask, invite my colleague to explain to you. When it comes to a report, I can discuss with the chairman of scholar. So we can discuss in what format and whether there should be a timeframe and how to tie it with the current work plan, because the fund is worth billions of dollars, so it's time to prepare a report. Mr. Long Yu Chong, can I ask the secretary to clarify what's said in his opening remarks, page two? To provide recurrent air conditioning grants for public sector schools to cover the daily expenses of air conditioning systems installed and reserving resources for installation of air conditioning systems in schools based on their needs. Chair, air conditioning was installed in schools to abate noise, not for the comfort of students. That was the policy back then, and therefore... And therefore, many schools were not qualified to have air conditioning to mitigate noise. And back then, Ledge Co. for secure or tried to fight for special schools to have air conditioning for them. But uh the Education Bureau was unwilling to do so. We took pains to find commercial sponsorship for air conditioning to be installed in special schools. Uh still, uh special schools, because usually they are in remote areas, they don't have the problem of noise. They are not given any um subsidy for the air conditioning costs. All right, you talked about um providing recurrent air con grants for public sector schools. Will you cover special schools as well? And you say to reserve resources for installation of air con system in school based on their needs. So do you consider um only a noise as a need or will other factors uh be taken into account? Secretary?
For air conditioning, we've considered this issue, and we accept that air conditioning should be a basic facility in schools. So uh all classrooms uh will be fitted with air conditioning in school halls as well. And uh what I say here about um based on needs, because uh many schools have already got air con installed. So the need is uh whether um there is the need to replace it or to install it. But if only a new system has been uh installed recently, we will not replace it at this moment. So this is what I mean by uh needs. So uh there is uh no need to consider rebate abatement of noise. This was mentioned in the last policy address. Members may consider it as a successful move of Ledge Co. uh to get something for schools. We will accept this presentation. All right, we thank you for changing uh your uh original intent. And other point is to enhance nursing support in special schools. In mainstream schools, send students of education needs, of special education needs, more professional support for such as uh education, psychology, and also speech therapists. Has the administration increased the resources to a- assist mainstream schools with more send students? Because uh the proportion is increasing in mainstream schools, making it difficult for them to provide a normal learning environment. Without the assistance of professionals, I think we'll be wasting the time of send students. Secretary?
Uh the mode of uh support for send students is on a headcount basis. For instance, uh if at a certain uh form, uh there are a certain number of send students, then a grant will be provided. And schools can use the money to employ professionals, mentioned by Mister Leng. If then there are more send students in the schools by proportion, uh the amount of grant will also be increased. In the education panel meeting a few weeks ago, we provide information on uh enhanced support or assistance for uh send students in schools. Uh for instance, we consider whether there should be improvement to our current uh mode of uh supervision. And uh we have consulted stakeholders, and we are studying now whether there should be changes in the future. Doctor Cheng Chong-Tang. Question oh one five, and it's related uh to uh the um scholarship for um excellence. Now, uh we are moving to the uh third term of the scholarship. The intention is to uh support our outstanding students to study overseas under the Hong Kong Scholarship for Excellence scheme. And then after they have completed the uh programs, they will uh come back to uh work in Hong Kong for two years. That's their commitment. I'd like to know uh the current status. They have yet to complete their studies, right? This is the fourth year into the um implementation of the scheme. The majority of students have not returned to Hong Kong yet. Of course, uh some have returned if they were on uh master programs, and some are working in Hong Kong already. So far, we have not seen uh any uh difficulties in satisfying the conditions. Well, uh that's a four-year program, but usually uh ma- a master program will last for four years. I urge the administration to give us statistics on this. This is important, because we're using taxpayers' money to support outstanding students. We want them to return to Hong Kong to work. And under the scheme, the government offers about eighty thousand dollars for outstanding overseas students to uh study in Hong Kong. I don't think there is uh the requirement for them to uh remain in Hong Kong to work after graduation. So I'd like to know uh the status after they have completed their studies. How many of them have uh remained in Hong Kong to start their career? Or is it a case that these foreign students will be allowed to return to their home countries after completion of studies? We have a scholarship scheme amounting to eighty thousand dollars per student. And they will be paid to a student upon recommendation by the relevant university. There is no requirement in the term in the scheme that they stay behind to work. We reward them for their academic excellence. And it's also a means of encouragement. So after they have completed their studies here, after they return to their home country, we hope that they will maintain uh the liaison with Hong Kong. Perhaps uh Mister Lo, the Deputy Secretary, will have something to add. Thank you.
Regarding the uh scheme as set by the secretary, the intention is to award outstanding overseas students studying in local universities. So there is no requirement for them to uh stay in Hong Kong to work upon graduation. But we do have a policy to encourage them to stay behind in Hong Kong if necessary. The policy is to allow them to stay in Hong Kong and work for one more year visa free, or they can continue their study within that year as well. Now, I hope the administration can seriously review this scheme. Because we only offer forty thousand dollars to a local student per year, and for overseas student is eighty thousand dollars per head per year. However, there is no requirement that top-notch students, overseas students, can stay in Hong Kong to contribute to our community after receiving the scholarship. I think this is not reasonable. How can a local government uh fund an o- an offers student to study in Hong Kong, allow them, allow him to leave afterwards? And uh a local student receives less under the scheme if he goes overseas. This sounds logical. Can you explain to us why isn't that requirement? Now, for a local student, they pay forty thousand odd dollars as fees, and for an overseas student is hundred twenty thousand dollars. So we believe that we can grant uh an overseas student a little bit more. All over the world, in different universities, they also offer scholarships to uh overseas students. In general, they do not require overseas students to stay in that country after graduation. And this is also a move to uh promote internationalization of local universities. Uh thank you, uh Mister uh Doctor Zheng for your suggestion. I don't know whether uh your suggestion would attract the opposition of local students. Uh question two six one, U G C. Uh we have uh the uh secretary here. Just last year, attended a concern groups meeting for uh safeguarding C T U. Uh that is to uh support the part-time social work program of City University. And according to uh the students, U G C will not fund such programs anymore. As a result, C T U is going to scrap its part-time social work bachelor program. There are twenty-two thousand um odd social workers who are licensed. There are nineteen thousand with a diploma and fourteen thousand odd uh holding bachelor degrees. I'd like to know whether this is U G C's policy. Seventy-six thousand odd diploma social workers would like to further their studies, but there is no way out with only one program, Hong Kong offering fifty-five places per year. So I'd like to know whether this is indeed the policy of U G C or has a city who just uh shuck the responsibility to U G C?
That's about the social work diploma, master, and degree programs at universities. A second question is on reply two oh uh eight. Now, one school social worker for each school aims to provide more support in terms of social work to students. Uh it will adopt a integrated or raw all-round approach to enhance the counseling service as a whole. In its reply, the E D B said that uh based on fairness and openness principles, when schools uh purchase uh services, uh there should be competitive quotations to be solicited, and tendering process has to be implemented. Now, because of this tendering process, while the the program has become a major problem for schools, this tendering process has undermined the stability of the services provided. Uh tendering has to be taken out, say, once every three to five years, and social workers' um wastage rate is very high, and the service quality has been hurt. Now, when S W D provides the services in schools, um they don't have to uh adopt tendering, but E D B is insisting on the tendering process. And this very good measure has uh turned into a problem. Mister?
I note Mister Shu's uh views on the so- school social worker in each school uh program.
The present approach is that is not that the S W D will send social workers to schools in primary schools. But the counseling uh mode is diversified. And uh we will not go by a single approach. At many occasions, I've said that we have to work together with the primary schools and the student guidance teachers and talk to them uh to see, to come up with the best approach. My uh question is on tendering. Why can't you um model after the S W D? And then you are using um the uh tendering process where the lowest bidder will be uh given the contract? Why can't we use a, say, a fixed price, a tendering process, and a lowest bid bidding, a tendering process? Um as I said last time, we will go back and consider. Normally, the lowest bidder will get the uh bid. But then the S- Mister Chu told us that the S W D has implemented this fixed price tendering approach, so-called. So we'll co- we'll consider. Now, con- concerning the C T U's uh issue, this is a self-financed program, so it will be up to the university to decide whether to offer the program. In our allocation, we have the requirement uh which sets out that the U- the funds obtained from U G C should not be spent on self-financed programs. There is no uh policy banning the universities to uh offer self-financed programs. We have a working group looking now into the development of uh self-financed programs, and particularly on self-financed programs offered by U G C-funded institutions. You don't have the policy now banning them to offer certain programs, is that right? Now, as some uh U G C-funded institutions are now offering self-financed programs, but the condition is that the uh the account books of the two types of programs should be totally separate. This is an established policy. Doctor Fernando Zhang. The Secretary for Education will um consider the fixed amount tendering uh approach, which has im- implement been implemented by the S W D for uh ten years. Uh it shows that the different departments are not talking to each other. Now, the S W D originally had the the policy of um the granting the contract to the lowest bidder, but we criticized them heavily for that. Under that approach, the cost will be ch- will be minimized, and the wages offered will be the lowest. So the people employed will be the least um experienced, and the service quality um will not be very good. We don't mean to belittle uh social workers employed um under that approach. But we are talking about people-oriented uh services here, and that approach won't help with the provision of service, and the wastage rate is also very high. And very often, under that approach, the least experienced social workers will be hired. So I hope that of course, uh there's still some um contention on that uh policy. But you must change the tendering uh mechanism expeditiously. Now, uh Chairman, I would like to follow up on Doctor Quoc's question about Chinese history, textbook, and the vetting mechanism. The secretary said that there is this confidentiality requirement. There should not be any conflict of interest. And the publishers may affect the uh panelists um in their decisions if there is no confidentiality requirement. Now, Doctor Quoc was quoting a a media report, which was extensively covered by other media as well. Uh we thought the these are objective statements. Um Hong Kong is in the southern part of China. Hong Kong sovereignty has been handed over to uh the mainland, and there is uh one-party dictatorship in the country. These are objective statements, but then after the vetting uh process, these statements are considered inappropriate statements and should not be used. Now, this is a non-transparent vetting process. Now, after this vetting process, are there any government officers who will um gatekeep uh later on? Or is it that after the vetting process has been completed, the textbook publishers have to um make changes based on the vetting panelists, uh vetting panels uh decision? Are there government officers who will make the final decision and will do gatekeeping? We will uh, Secretary, we will consider the uh fixed amount tendering process. Why uh the S W D has been able to do it, we will have to understand uh the situation. It doesn't necessarily mean that we can do it. Well, the first thing to do is to try to understand the ins and outs of this system and whether it can be applicable in our situation. Now, as for textbook situation, when a publisher submits a textbook for vetting by the E D B, within the E D B, there um are colleagues who are expert in that particular subject who will look at it. And we will um invite to outsiders, say, from uh universities and frontline teachers and principals to help us out with the vetting. They don't know uh which uh publisher is involved. They will give us outside or external advice, and And after we've collated all the views of the panelists, then we will submit our recommendations to the publishers. And if needed, the publishers can come back to us and we can have a dialogue. Now, after they have made changes to their textbooks, they will again submit the textbooks for our examination. And then we will pass on the revised textbooks to the relevant panelists to take a look again. So that's how the process works. Maybe there, in the process, there needs to be discussion and that is allowed. And ultimately, we will arrive at a final proposal. And then we will consider whether the textbook can be included in the list of textbooks published by us. Now, as I said, it is inappropriate for us to say whether a statement is right or wrong. We will have to look at the context. Say, for the one or two statements quoted, I think the expression is problematic. Well, it's not just about the content and the context, but the statements themselves are problematic. I ask a very specific question. Which government officers are to make the judgment? Which positions or ranks are these government officers in? Say, the returning officer of election can DQ people, what about the EDB? In curriculum development, we have different sections. Maybe we have the Chinese history section and the head of that section will be responsible, but he doesn't have all the say himself. He will collect opinions, say, from the panelists and he will talk to the panelists on certain proposals. So it's a very much an interactive process. It's not one single government officers who is deciding on it. Reply zero five six. I have asked what kind of resources are being devoted into basic law education? What are the teaching and learning resources? I have looked through these materials. I think some of the content is quite biased. And for example, when we talk about universal suffrage, when they are asking whether the universal suffrage is penis here and also civil disobedience. They are asking whether for the sake of staging this disobedience, civil disobedience actions, can they be absent from school? So, starting from 2015, there are nine items of teaching and learning materials being issued. And you said that you would be consulting your own staff, DOJ, basic law experts, CMAB, etc. So in, can you tell me now, for the teaching materials that you have published, which government departments, which parties and which experts have you consulted? So that we, we know what experts come with such brainstorming ideas. And in your reply, you said that in the past years, you have spent one point five five million to three point six five million dollars. Can you give us a breakdown covering the, exactly the books and the teaching materials that you have published? Chairman?
I can't agree with Mr. Hui's comment that our teaching resources are biased and are brainwashing people.
If Mr. Hui can point out exactly which item in which material he considers biased, then we can further discuss with Mr. Hui. I, I don't think we should give you the, exactly the parties which have been consulted. Which experts? Well, can you not give me the list? We've consulted many parties. Is Maria term? Well, please let him answer. If members has a certain view on the item and in a certain material, finds it very problematic. Well, it's ultimately me who is publishing the materials and I would be happy to discuss with you the so-called items in question. We published the teaching materials based on the basic law and the relevant guidelines. So we are confident about the quality of our teaching materials. And maybe sometimes a language is not that good. Well, we are happy to improvement, improve on them, on it. But as to exactly who have given us their views, we're not going to disclose that information because they don't expect us to disclose information. For 2017-18, the spending is one point five five million dollars. Can you give us the quantity of materials published, the titles, etc? Can you give me the breakdowns? Yes, we can go back and, and see if we can do that. And then reply two three oh. And, and that is about interest for granted loan for, in, for universities. For, in the past five years, for non-minted tested loans, the government has received an interest amounting to fifty-five million dollars. Now, since you, the public coffers are flushed with money and you are considering waiving the exam fee of DSE, why are you charging interest on students, university students? Have you considered waiving the interest on such loans? Of course, they are bound to repay the loans after graduation, but why are you charging them interest when they're still studying?
There are two types of loans. One is means-tested and the other is non-minted tested. For means-tested loans, we do not charge interest during the studying stage. But for students receiving non-minted tested means, so that means, well, when you're a university student, we will give you a loan and students are required to pay a very low interest to cover the cost. This is acceptable. Mr. Ray Chen.
Oh oh one. BCA, basic competency assessment. As we all know, about ten percent of the student cohort will be required to take BCA. But the effect will be comprehensive assessment because according to the official line, these students have voluntary asked to take the BCA so that that can be comprehensive data for the whole school. So last time, the, we understood that a hundred and eighty-odd students taking BCA's for the whole S, P3 cohort. I'd like to know the latest figure. We have received assistance, cry for assistance from parent. I read out one letter. We are a parent of a certain school. We protest against the decision by the school that all P3 students are to take BCA. How can the school be so high-handed? Should I ask the parent to send that complaint to you or to their school and are going to pay heed? And I'd like to ask you some information. First, I ask you the amount of money spent on BCA and the answer here is seventy-two million dollars. The secretary asked me to clarify my question. Am I asking about the expenses for 2018-19? Or that for 2018 only? This is important because we have to move an amendment to the draft estimates. I guess the contract for HKYEA in between 2015 to 2018 is two hundred and ninety-six million dollars and you arrive at seventy-odd million dollars. But this year is different. Only ten percent of the student cohort will be asked to take BCA's and I think the fees should be lowered, the cost should be lowered because you, for instance, you'll be printing fewer exam papers. How come the expenses are more or less the same as last year? Have you prepared that most students will take the assessment anyway? And so you have to print the same number of exam papers?
Secretary, the cost of implementing a BCA is not always determined by the number of candidates. There are some fixed costs that have to be spent anyway. So we can't say that because there are few candidates, the expenses will be lower. Otherwise, we don't have to deal with the financial implications of fewer candidates for HKDSE.
But I'll see if Ms. Hong can answer the question.
Yes, that is a ten-year contract and we've just given the average. But there are some fixed costs to be borne anyway. We can only do an adjustment after the BSA is over. We have to have real, we have to have information on the variables such as the number of candidates. So this seventy-two million dollar is your estimate for 2018-19, right? Can you update me on the number of candidates taking the BCA this year? Can I invite HKYEA to take the question? Dr. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Chen, for your question. Last time, we said a hundred and eighty schools. I understand that some schools have difficulties. They have to go through some procedures. So more applications are coming in. I don't have the latest figures. What about public-sector schools? The same. Parents of public-sector schools complaining that they were not consulted. Now, we don't know about the school sponsoring bodies, but what about public-sector schools? Well, public-sector schools are just like other segmented schools. We leave it to schools to decide as to how to consult stakeholders and come to a final decision and report the number to HKYEA.
Dr. Zhang. We have approved funding under draft estimates for career and life planning and for helping ethnic minorities to learn Chinese. And the secretary has reported to the panel, telling us it's been quite effective. However, we don't see this in this draft estimate. Career and life planning is meant for young people. So based on their own personality and positioning at the market and their own interests, they can explore their interests and possible career when they are still young. And for ethnic minorities, Chinese is very important to them because many of them were born in Hong Kong, they grew up here, but because of their family background, they aren't able to learn the Chinese subject properly. So we're grateful to the administration for reserving funds in these two areas. The problem is money has been spent. Would like to know how well and effective it's been used. Can you report to us, maybe in the future, the effectiveness of your measures? Secretary, whether it be career and life planning and assistance to NSE students learning the Chinese subject well? Well, this, these are recurrent expenditure. So it's already included in the draft estimates. If you to look at our draft estimates for secondary schools on points to note, we mentioned career and life planning and assistance to non-Chinese ethnic minorities. How effective have you been? Regarding effectiveness, we do review from time to time. In due course, we can report to the education panel the findings of our review. Thank you, Secretary, for your undertaking. Because we want to know for sure. Now, if you're doing a good job, we may give you more money. But if schools are not helping students in these areas, we may consider removing the provisions for them. We have to be fair, we are using taxpayers' money. Secretary, regarding number one one nine. Two billion dollars will be provided to enhance support for KGs. We have many KG students, I mean KG teachers. KGs are not given any provision for employee supply teachers. The reason why I ask this question is many KG teachers are young women and they may get pregnant and have to take maternity leave. So if one teacher is on leave, the other teacher will have to take over her duties. And this is quite common in KGs, adding to the workload of other teachers. Would you consider giving allowance for employee supply teacher in KGs?
This is about the calculation of grants to KGs under the new system. In principle, we followed the mode of operation of KGs and the teacher ratio has been increased from one to fifteen to one to eleven to offer more flexibility to schools. So that in terms of class preparation and training and teachers having to take casual or sick leave, we have already provided resources to cater for these scenarios. And some KG teachers are being trained to help NSE students. We give special assistance to KGs so that teachers can take time to attend training. A few years down the road or a couple of years down the road, we're going to review the new KG funding mechanism. Will we then ask KGs as to whether we should adjust the formula for calculating allowances?
Mr. Ho, Zhang. Question number oh two four. The need in special education. Now, there are some figures provided by the administration. I'd like to ask about assistance to SEN students and people with ADDH. Now, the gap from S2 to S, I mean, P2 to P3 group, there is a very marked increase in the number of such students in this transition. It said that identification will usually take place in between P2 and P3. Secretary, Mr. Zhang is correct. Usually, in the second half of P2, we will start asking teachers to assess students according to a list. And then towards the end of P1, of course, some students will have to wait for proper assessments. Meanwhile, the teachers will provide extra support and assistance. So by the time a student receives assessment, it's usually in the second half of P2. A proper assessment will be done there usually. So in P3, we have more confirmed cases, a sudden surge. So in P-three, we have more confirmed cases, a sudden surge in the number of confirmed cases for support provided to students in schools. So we don't wait until assessment is done. We will ensure the resources are available when problems are spotted.
A follow-up.
All right, these students are identified and you have an old-school, universal, a whole-school approach with three levels of intervention. So assistance would include cash grant so that you can employ teaching assistants or more teachers to help, all right? In addition to learning support grant, what other things do you have? Will you have extra resources and training to teachers? Because special skills may be needed in teaching these students. What support do you have for primary teachers to do this? Anything other than support grant? Yes, for sure. We provide resources and professional support and teacher training. These are our main measures to support teachers.
Can I defer to Mrs. Wong to elaborate? Apart from professional training of teachers for SEN students, we launch specific projects, Tika Autism, and ADHD students as examples, starting twenty-eleven in junior and senior primary school. And now it's junior and secondary schools. Some four hundred schools are now covered under our special measure. And there are three tiers of support will be provided to students to train them up on social skills. And then teachers are also supported in teaching in the classroom. So this is an example. Apart from granting cash subsidy to schools which can then buy more services, we can, we are also supporting schools in other aspects through, say, offering support to them through our education psychologists. And so we're trying out different support models as well. I've got ten seconds left. Apart from teachers, parents of SEN students need support as well. So does the administration have any plan to help these SEN students' parents, Mrs. Wong? We know that parents play an important role in helping SEN students. So we encourage schools, when they consider appropriate, to involve the parents as much as possible in the students' school activities. So they are just encouraging. Mr. Yip Kin Yuen.
In the draft budget this year, I like to say something about paragraph four of the speaking notes. And that is on the recurrent expenditure. One is one point four billion dollars. And at the assumption of the office time, then five millions was earmarked and we had left with a remaining amount of three point four billion dollars in recurring funding. But we don't have the items of spending, we just have the amount. And then the one point four billion dollars amount is a second sum reserved. And now you are reserving extra two billion dollars. And you said that you would talk to the education sector and then take into account the suggestions of the different task forces before making decisions. Maybe you would spend it on kindergartens, integrated education. I think it's good and I hope that you can embark on specific measures as soon as possible. So, but then, based on your present approach, you would only be able to spend the amount in the next financial year. You are not talking about the estimates for this financial year should be for the next financial year. So in other words, the recurrent expenditure will not be spent in the coming year. So it's just a nominal sum. People, it doesn't serve any real purpose. Is it the case that we don't know what to do with this amount? When the new term government started and they were eager that we endorse the three point six billion dollars before the summer recess and they were eager to do things. But now it's different. Now, the education sector, together with the government, have arrived at consensus on what to do. But how come that now it's so difficult to forge a consensus? Is that, is it the case that the government doesn't know how to spend this three point four billion dollars? So can the government respond to this? And that is in the coming financial year that you would implement measures asked after eagerly by the education sector, no matter is the professional development of teachers, kindergartens, integrated education, et cetera. Please spend the money to implement measures in these aspects. The member is right in pointing out that for this three point four billion dollars, this is not reflected in the draft estimates this year. But then, in the future, we have earmarked this sum for education purpose. And it goes to show that the government, the CE and the FS have attached a lot of importance to investment in education. So pending specific measures being formulated, we are, have undertaken that the three point four billion dollars will be set aside as recurrent funding. And I don't think the analogy made by Mr. Yip is correct. So the sum is there just for window dressing. I don't think that's the right remark. When the current term government first assumed office, we immediately made a funding proposal of a three point six billion dollars to the Letgo for education purpose and that was endorsed by the FC and the council. And we are now, we have a three point four billion dollars now. And we have to set priorities for what we do. And we need more discussion within the sector as to the priorities to be set and what should be done to address the pressing problems. The education sector does have its own requests and we have our views. And as said by the C G, we must work together with the education sector to set priorities and that takes time.
Chairman, can the government be more resolute and bold in making decisions? And when the current term government first assumed office, they did, they were bold and I appreciate that. But if we say procrastinate for one year, then that means this three billion dollars is so, is not, remains unspent. And we're not even sure where there will be further delays in the next year. Dr. Prizella Leng, my question number is EDB one-three-six and one-three-one. The two questions are interrelated. I asked about the promotion of the China's Constitution and your answer is that you would focus to your work on the tertiary education sectors. But then I know that universities are not very familiar with the Chinese Constitution. But for secondary schools, and I think we should do more on promoting the basic law and one country, two systems. Now, recently, we discussed the colocation arrangement and the MPCSC has made a decision to allow the two governments to sign the cooperation arrangements. Now, apart from the legal sector, the members of the public may get confused and they think that the decision is not good enough. Interpretation of the basic law is the right route. But then, in the Chinese Constitution, the decision of the MPCSC and interpretation of the basic law of the MPCSC are of equal constitutional status. And for administrative arrangements like that, decisions of the MPCSC is a better approach. Of course, we have to do more to educate universities and secondary schools on such kind of matters. And I think you are not allocating resources and doing that. You don't have a direction to do that. So this is something that the people should learn about. I agree with Dr. Prizella Leng's saying that it's important to know and learn about the country's constitution and the basic law. If people have better understanding of the constitution, then the recent rumors on the Chinese history textbook will be dispelled.
Now, in question one-three-six, because your question is about tertiary institutions. So that's why in our reply, we just talk about support to post-secondary institutions. In fact, in primary and secondary schools, we are doing a lot in helping students learn about the importance of the country and the constitution. Mr. Dr. Leng's question is about the resources devoted to it. And actually, we have committed resources to help students have a correct understanding of the country's constitution. And if time permits, can I defer to Mrs. Wong to talk about resources to promote basic law and China's constitution in primary and secondary schools?
Can I add in, say, the liberal studies subject? Can constitution be included? Because you will be covering contemporary China in the liberal study subject. And especially, say, in forums held in the past, we, those who opposed one country, two systems, said that there was no need for Hong Kong people to learn about China's constitution. I think the one country, two systems is premised on the fundamentals in China's constitution. Mrs. Wong, we attach a lot of importance on basic law education, secondary and primary schools, and that's covered in the different subjects. Recently, we have updated the basic law teaching materials and our title of that subject is Constitution and the Basic Law. And the basic law is in every way related to the country's constitution. We provide training online to students and parents and all the teaching materials is based on that principle. And Hong Kong's basic law is very related to the country's constitution and that is set out clearly in our teaching materials.
I have two questions and what about liberal studies? In liberal studies, in today's China, we can cover the subject of constitution of China. But in liberal studies, we don't have textbooks, official textbooks. So maybe going forward, we can try to do more to include that in the curriculum.
I would like to follow up on Mr. Michael Tean's earlier question and that is about net teachers. Every year, we spend eight hundred million dollars on it. And I don't think that is needed because there is one school, two systems being implemented. And the salary and benefits of net teachers is vastly different from that of a local English teacher. While local English teacher can be, can teach in an interesting way, can tell stories and they can be trained up further. And as for reading and interest, and some P-six student leaders told me that they love reading English stories, but they find it hard to write reports of stories. And they are very, they are in the form of a table. So they just sort of go through the motion by filling out the form in handing in the assignment. And earlier, you discussed the content of Chinese history textbooks. I'm bewildered and even astonished. You said that there is a problem with the saying China is taking back the sovereignty of Hong Kong. You said that Hong Kong's sovereignty has all along belonged to China. While you are the Secretary for Education, you adopt such a historical perspective. And it's like what happened to the British, signing of British Joint Declaration. It doesn't exist anymore.
The two documents talked about transfer of sovereignty back to the Beijing government. So this is some transfer of sovereignty. So your explanation was really ridiculous. Let me elaborate. It's clearly stated in the basic law that the country has resumed sovereignty over Hong Kong. That means that is resumption of sovereignty over Hong Kong. He's never given up his sovereignty. And even the United Nations have admitted that Macau, Hong Kong, is not a colony of Britain. So all along, the country has the sovereignty of Hong Kong in its hand. So there is no question of transfer or resumption of sovereignty. It's just that in nineteen ninety-seven, the country resumed the exercise of its sovereignty in Hong Kong. Is that similar to relationship with landlord and tenant? I won't use that analogy, but I have to make clear the concept because this is an important point. And this is what's in our constitution, the basic law. But historically speaking, Hong Kong was ceded to the UK permanently. And you talk about, no, no, I'm not done yet. The sovereignty is here. But for one time, though it has lost it, it could not exercise the sovereignty over Hong Kong. And of course, it's not a tenant, a landlord relationship because no rent was given. No, no, there is no need for you to put it for me, Chairman. Are you saying that in future, no history textbook can use handover or transfer of sovereignty? Well, if members would like to ask questions of policy, please return to the relevant panel. But you asked question of policies as well. Is it true that in future, no textbook can use terms like returning of sovereignty? Well, terminology used in textbooks, that has to be considered in context. I'm saying that taken out of context, that sentence is problematic. That's my personal opinion. So you personally feel that is problematic. But please answer me, whether in future, no history textbooks can use resumption and transfer of sovereignty? Allow him to answer. Well, even if you press on, he will give you the same reply. This is not a debate, but I still have time left. Well, you can go to another question. I personally will not be involved in the review of any textbooks. After all, it is to be determined by the committee. Well, obviously, you have a directive from the Emperor. I hope all questions can be related to the draft estimates as far as possible. My question. My question is uh employment of net teachers. I think uh everyone in Hong Kong knows my opinion on this. I've always asked that in primary schools, we have one net teacher plus one local teacher. And according to my calculation, uh we need about four hundred million dollars per year, including housing benefits to net teachers. Because if we look at uh BCA taken at S in uh P three, there's been improvement in the scores in the English subject, but not in other subjects. That's why I think net teachers are very important. And my experience in scholar tells me that kids started to develop an interest in language when they are three years old. I've got two grandchildren. They are in K one. And now, if we give them a more input for sure, they will develop an interest for English. And so even in KG, we should have net teachers that will cost about seven hundred million dollars. So in total, it's one point one billion dollars. Eleven, one point one billion dollars can greatly enhance Hong Kong's international competitiveness. So please respond to this suggestion. I know you are studying this proposal. What is the outcome of your consideration? Although I disagree with Miss Claudia Mill in the subject of history, but Miss Mill just now said that uh or she asked about the role being played by net teachers in Hong Kong. I think this subject warrants more discussion. So have you completed your study? We agree that we should encourage students to uh come into contact with uh the English language and to read English books as early as possible, but can that only be done by employment of net teachers? We need time to consider this issue. Right now, we don't have the plan to add net teachers to KG. I think my position is very clear. I think it was last year, the year before last, Mister Eddie Ng said that uh he was conducting a study, and that might be the direction. At least you have got a study. Are you going to present a report to us? If you think that net teachers are not useful, you shouldn't have net teachers in primary schools as well, so you can save resources. Why is that we don't have net teachers in KGs? If I remember correctly, our promise was to consider whether an additional net teachers could be added to some primary schools. We did not promise that the study would cover KGs. Now, if you say that you're not going to cut the net teachers in primary school, uh yet they are not so good as to warrant one net teacher per KG. Can you give me the rationale? Well, KG and primary education is different. The fact that we have net teachers in primary schools doesn't mean that we should do the same for KGs. I'll give the floor to Mrs. Hong. Well, it doesn't matter. I have two more questions. I have to make it clear that I disagree with you. All language experts will tell you that three to seven years is more important than ten to twelve years when it comes to developing an interest in language. You can ask your language experts. As regards BCA, I'm welcome the government's decision. You know, I've always said that uh the um students and also schools should remain anonymous. I like to have an average of for the performance of all schools in Hong Kong. And you don't have a give them an analysis of each and every question. This will reduce the incentive uh of drilling. For instance, can you um provide an analysis of groups of uh questions or a particular area of learning? Can that be done? Now, if the whole uh if the whole form is to take part, then there will be options. Well, I think for most of the questions, uh you have an analysis for all questions. You go back and um make sure if the percentage is low, I don't mind, but if it's high, you should review it. Mister Alok King.
Thank you. Chair. I raised this in the past, but here I'd like the Education Bureau to uh give us a number of the number of members in is textbook, vetting committee, uh the um who they are and also whether they are paid. Because for the review of history textbooks, in fact, this will be increasing uh will be a subject of increasing concern in the community. There are contents allowed in the past, but not now. For instance, uh Hong Kong is in a southern part of China. All of a sudden, their sentence is not allowed. This is baffling. The composition of the panel will be a great concern to the community. And how come reports by the panel is not published? Now, in Taiwan, they also have a panel for review of a curriculum, and they uh publish why some textbooks uh should be reviewed. Now, publishers are very unhappy with uh your uh amendments to the textbooks, and they have um disclosed this matter. All members in that panel are not paid. They provide their service to the government on a pro bono basis. And of course, different subjects will have different uh members in their committee. And now we have um group of members to choose from. We have different members in different panels, and we also have due consultation. And as for textbooks, this is about uh relationship between the government and the publisher. As I said, we have to ensure that the panelists don't know who the uh publishers are and vice versa to ensure that the review is done in a fair manner. This has been the methodology all these years. And if the publisher has got any query with the report, they can um discuss with us, and there can be inquiries. As regards publishers are very dissatisfied, I don't know where this uh uh noise comes from. If it is true, I think we have to approach publishers. In your communication with publishers, have you heard such views? All along, we have not heard of any uh discontent with outcome of our review. Well, if there is no dissatisfaction with the outcome of the review, there won't be such a report. Now, imagine I'm the publisher. I submit a textbook for review. I have to safeguard my interests. So I have no choice but to swallow any uh dissatisfaction. But now they have uh revealed their dissatisfaction to the media. There must be some reasons for that. I've never confirmed any report. We will not uh respond to any speculations in relation to review of textbooks. As regards whether the member can represent a certain publisher, well, it is for the member to judge. Well, this is not the focus of our discussion. Uh the crux of the matter is you are being very um intransparent. You talked about uh the panel. Having a group of uh people and in each review, you will select members to conduct the exercise. So at the very least, you should tell us members appointed by the government to review textbooks. For instance, this year, uh you have to review textbooks uh for senior secondary history subjects. Your time is up. Miss Starry Lee, I've got a few questions. First, the waiving of Hong Kong DSE examination fees. Now, the draft estimate has proposed a waiver for uh the fees. I am very, I have strong views about not including uh self-study students. Well, unless you can prove that there's an abuse, but the decision is to exclude this group of people. Have you considered how you can remedy the situation? In fact, HKTSE fees should be borne by the government as a matter of policy. And have you ever considered not to charge examination fees for cost recovery?
Let me take the second question first. For the exam fee, it is charged on a cost recovery basis. So as to whether uh the fee should be borne by the government on a long-term basis, the government doesn't have any plan to do so. Because for many fees charged by the government, they are based on a user pay principle. And the Ishkayi AA is a um has a um financial autonomy. So it's charging the fees based on a cost recovery basis. And the exams serve some value for the students. And um o- only one exam is being taken by students. So we don't think that there is a problem. And for those in financial need, uh certain um help will be offered. But this is not a full stop here. Uh based on the changing circumstances, we can review the mechanism from time to time. And as for the uh waiver of the exam fee and the discussions surrounding that, um Miss Lee uh shows concern to self-study students. When the FSS uh spoke about this, our original plan was to cover them as well. And we want to show care to the self-stud- uh study students, and we want to do it for fairness sake. However, after the proposal was announced, there was discussion within the community. Uh people have raised comments uh that uh these students may enroll for the exam just because it's free. And as a result, those studying in uh Form Five now are worried. Because uh well, since the exam is free of charge, those who already got very good results will take the exam again. And sometimes people would just um just like to do it for their various reasons. So Form Five students have told us that they um very worried about the exam. So after trying to strike a balance uh among all sides, we have no choice but to uh make that decision. And that is to cover only students studying in school to take the exam uh uh free of charge in twenty nineteen. And the self-study students might um might be disappointed, or the private candidates might be disappointed. Well, would people really would like to um do that just because uh the the take the exam just because it is free of charge? Has there been a trend, or has there been the phenomenon that there are um uh more private uh students because of uh the free exam? You you must have statistics to back up your decision. You just don't just rely on remarks on the internet. That's not a fair approach. That we would not have any statistics. We don't, we just have uh statistics on the number of private students paying fees for the exam. We don't have any statistics on uh private students uh taking uh the free exam in twenty nineteen. Well, you must have a annual statistics, right? What I said was, up to now, we haven't had any waiver of uh exam fees. So we don't have the statistics in that regard. We don't want to um students taking the exam in twenty nineteen to get too worried. Those who are studying in schools. Mister Tommy Chan, um it's my, I didn't expect that my it's my turn so soon. Uh new uh more money will be given to schools this year uh for implementing the one-school social worker for each school policy. Currently, some schools are using uh some social work assistants who have the counselling and psychology bachelor's degree, and they're now uh uh taking on such a task in the school. So can you clarify for this uh one-school social worker for each school? Does it mean that this group of people will get out of job? Or is it social worker or um social or counselor? So both types of um people can be hired, and the stu- schools can make a choice of their own. Uh what is the FS's original intent uh in allocating the funding? And how is EDB going to spend this amount?
Sacrafe, Chairman. Uh the long-term goal is to have one social worker in each school. We understand that in primary school, uh in face of the very complicated uh social environment, uh social workers can play a good role. That's the long-term goal. Now, some other guidance uh uh teachers and some other guidance personnel are now uh working in schools. Is there a synergy between the two schemes? And some uh social well uh workers have uh uh raised a one plus one. We can consider that. I would not say that uh all uh guidance personnel and guidance teachers will give their places over to the social worker. Uh we have implemented a new system uh for uh the schools to own choice. Under the current system, many schools are already hiring social worker. So if they follow um our uh new policy, then they will promise that they will uh employ uh a degree social workers. Uh we also provide um other subsidies based on the number of classes. So um they can make use of such extra subsidy to uh employ other guidance personnel. So the the schools do have a choice now. If they are now employing a guidance personnel or guidance teacher, then they um are not asked to switch to a social worker. Now, say for some schools, they only have half um a a guidance personnel, then they would be given priority uh to get uh one social worker. So we will continue discussing with them. I understand that. I can accept your answer. But what I don't want to see is that for some uh guidance personnel who are working in the schools now, I'm not talking about the teachers taking on the guidance work. Um the teachers have their own teaching tasks themselves. They may uh take on guidance um work as well. But now some schools uh have employed uh guidance uh personnel who have a bachelor's degree. So they are not inferior to the social workers, especially they are now uh serving in the schools already. And maybe they are on a top part-time basis now. And I don't want to see that when the funding is available, then you will strictly abide by a social worker for each school. And then that um it does, the the social worker has necessary And then that, um, it does, the, the social worker has necessarily to be a degree holder in social work discipline. Uh, it's best that if we can have both social workers and guidance personnel. But then I am not sure we do have the resources. But schools told me that these guidance personnel can really help. So they should be employed together with the social workers. Chairman. Schools are free to choose whether they would continue with their present approach or whether they will, uh, hire a new social worker. So if new funding is allocated, then they can make a choice. Well, well, all you need to do is to give the schools a choice. Maybe they have the social worker now and they want to, um, switch to a guidance, um, assistant in the future. So, so all you need to do is to give them a choice. That's the view of the Liberal Party. Dr. Chang Chong Tai. EDB two five O, and that is, uh, the inadequate hostel places in UGC funded institutions. In Annex B, the extra demand is eighteen nineteen for individual institutions. The extra additional hostel place demand based on the projections is very high for City U and Poly U. For eighteen nineteen, the expected number of hostel places has grown by one thousand. For other institutions is two hundred to five hundred. The question, first question is how come that in this year, that is this extra one thousand demand for hostel places for these two universities? Can I ask Mr. Lo to take that question? Thank you, Chairman. For shortage of hostel places for individual universities. That's linked to the number of students for, um, universities. There are different, a few dark criteria. One in four-year hostel stay, a number of, um, research postgraduate students, the, um, distance between the homes and of the students in universities. So these are various variables and they are changing year by year. And I wonder whether the UGC has the statistics. If not, then we can provide the same to you after the meeting. Who to take that question? Maybe we can collect the statistics after the meeting for your reference. This is a special FC meeting. This is, uh, this is a major change. And starting from twenty eleven, we have a three-four-four curriculum. And the EDB should have expected that after the, uh, one year of hostel stay in full year of curriculum policy, you can project the demand for hostel places, right? And all of a sudden, there is this increased demand. Maybe there are more programs offered to non-local students. Uh, then there is this, hence this great demand. And there is this note on the assumption of full use of the twenty percent quota for non-local students enrolling undergraduate and postgraduate programs. So this is not something unexpected. Maybe there have been changes in the policies, um, driving up the, uh, demand for hostel places. You have to explain about this. Who to take the question? We will give you a detailed explanation. Looking at the figures, well, the, for the past academic years, these are the actual figures. Now for the upcoming year is the projected demand. So maybe the maximum requirements are taken on board when the projection is made. So hence a relatively higher figure. Maybe after the meeting, we can provide with, uh, provide, Dr. Chan with a better answer. It's not just about local students, whether they can stay for one year, um, at least in the hostel. And then we have to take on board the non-local students coming to Hong Kong. You shouldn't ask them to rent subdivided units. That's unreasonable. Maybe I can wait for your answer later on. You should have the basic statistics for local students. Can you give me the success rate of local students applying for a hostel place? I mean, this question is very related to the table of statistics. The government has announced such figures before. But what about the, in the past two to three years? What is the, how, what is the success rate of local students applying for, um, hostel places? Secretary, we can provide the relevant statistics to Dr. Chan. I must point out that we have followed strictly the calculation method agreed with the universities. Well, you're asking for so much figures, maybe you can write into them. Well, it's just about time to adjourn the meeting. So the next session will start fifty minutes later, eleven fifteen.